Good evening, welcome to the Midtown Ventura Community Council virtual candidate forums on September 10th, 2020. I'm Dan Long, Chair of the Midtown Council, and tonight we are hosting three candidate forums. The Town Ventura Community Council members are all volunteers and we are dedicated to the preservation, enhancement, and revitalization of the Midtown area. We strive to have a positive influence as change happens in our community and to educate citizens of those changes taking place. A public meeting bring presenters to speak about relevant issues of Ventura. All three forums this evening are being recorded, which were air later on caps. Tonight, before we begin, I wanted to extend our great appreciation to our volunteer administrator, Greg Mansfield, who has spent countless hours working to produce all three professional forums this evening. Greg Mansfield is an editor for two Powerboat magazines, a contributing writer to Speed News, and provides corporate communications for major events. Couple other notes, the MBCC Board is honoring all the work over the last hundred years by the League of Women Voters by donating a check to their organization. And also tomorrow, there will be again a flag raising ceremony, all local fire stations at 6:55 in the morning to honor the anniversary of 9/11. If you plan to go, you must wear masks, practice social distancing, and there will be no firehouse tourists. First up tonight is the Ventura United, excuse me, I didn't do the... Second up tonight is the City Council Candidate Forum for District Two. With that, I'm very happy to introduce David Maron, our moderator this evening. David moderates many forums for the League of Women Voters. David?
Thank you, Dan, for a great job. Thank you also to some of your board members like Pamela and John, who have also been very helpful putting this together, and of course Greg. Good evening, candidates. Good evening, audience. I am David Maron. And this program will have a minute and a half for opening statements. We randomly drew numbers earlier, and Doug Halter will go first, followed by Kristi Weir, and then Doogie Mitchie. A little bit of information for the candidates, look for Greg to hold up signs when you get to 30 seconds remaining, 10 seconds, and then we ask you to stop when you see the red sign. To the audience, as far as this program, it will be recorded available later. You can always visit the Midtown Community Council website for more information. If you happen to be on an iPad or a mobile phone, you may not be able to see the screen only audio. If that is the situation, look in the bottom left corner of your app, and you might see a button called "Screen." Press that to make sure you're able to see everything. So with that, candidates, thank you for participating tonight. We're going to go ahead and begin with the opening statements. Doug Halter goes first. Doug, you have a minute and a half.
Great, thank you, David. It's really good to see everybody. So good evening, Midtown Council and neighbors, friends. I wish we could be doing this in person, but this is trying times that we're going through right now. I want to first say, for those who don't know me, I'm Doug Halter, and I've been in Ventura for 35 years, and been very actively involved for at least 30 of those years. Many different things, starting initially with a lot of things that started transpiring at the end of the 1980s, and that's with helping to form AIDS Care Ventura County AIDS Partnership to help bring services to our community. And then, as we saw the Midtown Council forming first, actually, and then the West Side, Laura, then Merryweather, myself, and Terry Bichos started Downtown Community Council to help bring back our downtown. And then I helped with the social justice funds. I'm very honored and flattered to have been involved as much as I have in this community. And then also was on the Board of Comerians for the Music Festival. And when I was just on my board meeting for Rubicon Theater, I had started Rubicon 22 years ago. And I've been involved in many other capacities. With all that said, I feel it's time for me to raise the level of my involvement to help set policy and make sure that these new trying times, that I could help be that new leader, a bold leader that knows how to innovate. I have my own business, so I know it from a business perspective where the issues are, where the problems are. And I believe I could bring my talents and my life experiences and relationships to help make this community the best it could be. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Our next candidate is Kristi Weir.
Hi, it's good to know that we're having forums even though we can't be in person. As a Ventura City Council member, I have demonstrated thoughtful, balanced leadership and shown consistent responsiveness to the needs of the community. I am running for reelection in District Two to make sure you are all heard as we make decisions that will shape Ventura's future. Four generations of my family have been fortunate to call this beautiful community our home, and I'm committed to enhancing Ventura's livability for all ages. As we recover from the impacts of COVID-19, it is essential to have leaders with experience and vision. My years as a council member and mayor have given me a clear understanding of government processes, financial stability, and community priorities. I will continue to work for a vibrant historic downtown and midtown with diverse locally owned businesses and thriving cultural arts, managed growth that is planned responsibly to protect Ventura's quality of life, retain small town neighborhood character, and respect our limited water supply. A clean, green community, sidewalks, trees, bike paths, parks and beaches that are well maintained, and preservation of our hillsides, rivers, and coastline to sustain our natural beauty and provide habitat for wildlife, open space, and outdoor opportunities. I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Kristi, our next candidate is Doogie Mitchie.
Yeah, hi, glad to have you here and glad to be able to give you an idea of why I'm running. Just a brief comment, when you cast your vote, my last name does not have a T in it, it's M-I-C-H-I-E. So I don't know if that's on your screen, but if it is, just remember that spelling when it comes time to vote. I've been a member of the community for a long time. I've raised two boys here, all the way through elementary, middle school, and high school. I still have one in 10th grade, so hopefully that will be another two or three years. And I've been a very active member in our business community. I've helped many and probably some of you out there with legal issues that you've had or financial issues you had. And it's that background that I want to bring to assisting the city. We're going to have a tough time ahead. Revenues are down, we're in the middle of a terrible recession, and there's going to be some tough calls that have to be made. And I want to be there. I have the financial and legal background to help the city through those. So I'm hoping that you'll give me the opportunity to represent you, bring my education, work experience, and knowledge to the benefit of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dougie, we'll start with you. So first question, very important to the Midtown people, is the Main Street and Thompson Boulevard in the Midtown Ventura area, they're somewhat blighted, some would say very blighted. So if you were elected, how will you help restore these once vibrant thoroughfares?
Thank you. I don't know if you're aware, but I do have a PhD in urban planning. And unfortunately, the planning that's taken place in this city has not been very helpful for the development of the city. In fact, it's gotten to the point where the state has stepped in in cities like this, and they're enacting ordinances and that may not be what we want to do. And that's why I want to be proactive, instead of trying to prevent growth from occurring, but to assist businesses to come, bring in new business, new restaurants, things that will also attract tourists here, and that will increase the revenues to the city and allow us to do things like storefront revitalization programs, assist with the storefront owners associations, things that will bring a lot of improvement and vitality to the Thompson and Main Street corridors. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Halter, same question to you. What would you do about restoring the quality of the thoroughfares for Main Street and Thompson Boulevard?
Great, thanks, David. That's a great question, because Main Street, and we're very fortunate because our city grew from west to east, and Main Street and Thompson Corridors are main thoroughfares that go through beautiful neighborhoods. So what we need to do is reinvent what we have, keeping and having respect for what we love about our history, about our community, and doing something that's fitting for those boulevards. They should be beautiful boulevards, they can be beautiful boulevards. But we need to make sure that those people who are willing to invest in our community have certainty on what they can and can't do with the property. That's been part of the problem, is it on average takes 15 to 20 years to get something approved. There's many different public input times, but most people don't realize when that public input really can be heard. And so it's missed opportunity time after time again. So it's really about creating certainty, encouraging the private sector to do what they can do best, which is invest in our community. Businesses should be knocking down our door. We have everything. We are so blessed with so many things naturally, that most cities would be very fortunate to have one or even two of our assets. These businesses should be knocking down our door, and those boulevards should be housing businesses for the future, for the next generation, good paying jobs, affordable housing, as well as other housing needs. So it's really encouraging and enabling the private sector to invest in our city.
Thank you. Kristi, we'll wrap up this question with you. What would you do to help restore Main Street and Thompson Boulevard?
I'm glad you asked, because there's a lot going on. And I'm currently helping a group called the Midtown Merchants with a bunch of revitalization efforts revolving around clean and safe. To me, a lot of the issue along those corridors is blight. So I have been working, it's a lot of deferred maintenance. I've been working on getting rid of the abandoned news racks that are derelict, replacing street trees. I was the advocate that led the City Council to invest a lot of money in redoing the parking lot behind the 99 cent store, which was absolutely atrocious. And now it is totally repaved with brand new lights and trees and landscaping looks so much better back there. We are going to start doing more cleanups to get community activism happening, which helps, which helps, which helped us form the Downtown the Downtown Ventura Partners, and Doug helped with that in the early days when it was a neighborhood council. And the good news is in Midtown that we are getting new businesses. We have on Main Street, we have the Singing Sun Coffee Shop, and right next to that is coming in a brand new bookstore. We have a new pet supply store. We have two new housing developments across from Ventura High that have broken ground and are coming. So there is a lot happening, and I'm excited about participating in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi, we'll go ahead and stay with you, and we'll start on our next question. Kristi, what is your view on increasing the available housing in Ventura in terms of density, water needs, traffic, parking, schools? Obviously, there's a lot of competing issues. So share with us what your view is on how to increase housing.
Housing is controversial, because new housing has impacts on the livability of the surrounding neighborhoods. So it's extremely important in terms of how we do the housing. We currently have a state that is attempting to take away local control by preempting our land use decision-making authority. That is a problem. That is not good for Ventura, it's not good for the state, because it takes away our quality control. The city needs housing, but it needs community input into the process by which we make those decisions. Because our decisions are going to impact generations to come, not just giving them a place to live, but impacting the neighborhoods around them in terms of traffic. We have a limited water supply, we have constraints. One of our considerations we have to be very careful about going forward is emergency evacuations. So we have to be very careful about how we approve development. Unlimited growth doesn't work, we all know that, because there are lots of consequences to that. But a well-planned city needs to take in account community input, public participation, and lots of good design requirements. We do have challenges in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Dougie, we'll go to you. Same question, what's your view on how to increase housing in Ventura?
Thank you. We definitely have to increase housing. I have friends here in District Two that grew up here in town and can't afford to buy a home, and that's a crying shame. I have children that have grown up here, and I worry that they'll be able to afford a house. Unfortunately, our City Council has been sticking its head in the sand like an ostrich, and because of that, the state is stepping in. If you're not aware of it, Senate Bill 1120 will require every single family lot to be subdividable into two equal lots. They're doing that because cities like Ventura are doing nothing to supply affordable housing. And I think that's a crying shame. So if I'm elected, I will be very proactive in providing housing that will accommodate the needs of our citizens, their families. We can't stick our head in the sand. The growth is going to come, and either we deal with it, and we prepare for it, and we allow for good design and planning, or the state will continue to step in and do it. So please, when you come to vote, think about, let's proactively address housing, and let's provide opportunities for affordable housing here in Ventura. Thank you.
Doug will wrap up this question with you. So share with us your thoughts about increasing housing.
Okay, great. This is really one of the biggest issues facing our community, that and the lack of jobs, lack of good paying jobs. And the reality is, again, that we're a city that should be having businesses knocking down our doors who want to be here. I don't think there's any of us that want to see rampant unmanaged unplanned growth. We love Ventura for not being part of the Los Angeles metropolis, enjoying the things next to it, but not becoming part of that metropolis. So we want to be the best that Ventura can be. We want to know where it makes sense to have density, where it's a win-win for our community, and put that in. And I'd rather talk about entry-level housing, because it really is about the next generation, about those people that are in need as well, that can't afford the average home in Ventura, which are many, far too many. And so we need a bell curve of housing, an effective bell curve of housing. And we've agreed to save our farmlands, which I think is awesome. I've always supported SOWR. I've always supported making sure that we appreciate our natural beauty around us, including the islands, our hillsides, mountains, and our history. And I believe that we can add density downtown. There can be some density in Midtown on the corridors. And, but we do need to have, I agree, Kristi, we need to have public input. But it needs to be, again, a process that's certain, that people can predict, and that is the least amount of cost for the greatest amount of benefit for our community and for those who are willing to invest.
Thank you. And let's see, I think we'll go ahead and start with you again, Kristi, on this one. The question is, as you know, the pandemic is certainly affecting the state's finances. The budget is being cut, and there's a real risk that budget cuts will happen in the city of Ventura. If there are some severe budget cuts, what are some of the services that you would protect? And how? And what programs would you look to cut?
Fortunately, the city of Ventura is doing okay. I am the Chair of the City's Finance Audit and Budget Committee, and we went through from May until now, many, many, many meetings on just what you asked, what to cut, what to keep. Looking at our income, our property tax income is really not being affected. Our revenues from property taxes are even, they aren't down. Our sales tax revenues are down some, but because we get to share online sales tax revenues with whatever people order online, we get part of those sales tax revenues. And that's fortunate, because a lot of people, obviously during the pandemic, were not able to shop in stores as much, so they were ordering a lot online. We were able to, through our budget process, keep city services without having a whole lot of impacts. All of the departments did have to cut. We had each department have to look at specific cuts and make recommendations to us. There isn't one huge cut to one city service that had to happen. And so when you spread them out equally and make sure you're spending money wisely, I hope our citizens won't see a drop in services. We are still able to pave roads, and we are still able to keep you safe.
Thank you, Kristi. We'll move on to Doug Halter. Doug, same question to you. What are some of the services that you would protect if there are budget cuts? And what would you also have to cut? What programs would you cut?
Okay, that's a very good question. It's a question that I would hope that we could put our city in the position where we wouldn't have to consider those sort of things. It's really about making sure that, from my perspective, the three things that I believe local government is really all about is about protecting us, making sure that we're safe, that we're prepared for disasters, that we have water, that we have infrastructure that is in a higher quality than what we're currently seeing. So part of my platform is to raise the standards in our community, because Ventura deserves better, and I know we can do better. So as far as cutting programs, I would be looking at ways to increase the economic vitality to create more revenue first. And if I had to cut, it would be, we're probably have to look at some of the overtime and how we're managing the different offices. I believe we could save a lot of money through a more streamlined process. I know we've heard that before. But it's true, if you see all the resources, having had the good fortune of building my own house here in Ventura, here in Midtown, I could tell you it took me five and a half years to get a permit to build my home, $250,000 into it. Imagine the resources it took from the city to just approve a house. So we could save a lot of money by streamlining our processes and making sure the public has input, and we have spent more time and more resources in the projects that do happen in our community.
Thank you. Dougie, same question to you. What are some of the services you'd protect if we had severe budget cuts? And what are some of the programs you might cut?
I believe the primary purpose of city government is public safety. Absolutely would not cut any police or firefighter positions. In fact, we have positions that are authorized or unfilled, and I would get those positions filled. I think it's important that public safety is number one, absolutely must be protected from cuts. Number two, I think utilities. You know, our sister city there next door, Oxnard, there's a lot of controversy over the expense of sewer and water costs there. So another area that I would want to protect would be the utilities that all of us depend on. That being said, it'd be nice to say, well, our revenue is not being changed. It's nice to think that maybe the federal government will again give $600 a week unemployment checks so those who are unemployed can continue with their sales. But I think the reality is we are going to see a drop in revenue. And as a result, we're going to have to take some tough steps to ensure that the city operates fiscally sound. And that will result in some cuts in some departments, whether that's furloughing some of our employees, maybe reducing their employment by a day a week, whatever it takes, I'm willing to do it, because the reality is revenue is going to be a constraint. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our next question. Doug Halter, you'll be up first. And we've seen changes happen because of the pandemic and restaurants trying to survive, and a lot of that is involving downtown. So the question for you, Doug, is if the merchants supported it, would you be in favor of making Main Street permanently pedestrian-only through downtown?
I got to tell you, there's going to be a lot of lasting things that come out of this pandemic. And I've said it before, and I know you've heard it before, is that some of the most beautiful things happen in the most tragic times in human history. And I think locally, we're going to see some really good things. I have to think positive that that a lot of good will come out of the horror that we're seeing and witnessing with this pandemic. With that said, I've been cautioned to make sure that I don't really give an opinion based upon something that I may be at the podium and hope to be at the podium come later this year to help vote on. And so, but I will say that I love seeing the activity in those restaurants out on the street. I know that when the downtown was renovated initially, it was meant to have the restaurants come onto the street and that parking to go into parking lots or parking structures behind the buildings. So it really makes me smile to be able to go downtown, even with my pups. I have three dogs that love to go for a walk. It's a nice treat for them. And see a lot of my friends and neighbors, and it's really nice to see everybody being careful and wearing their masks and social distancing. So I would love to see the options, and I know what I'm seeing right now looks really encouraging.
Thank you. Dougie, same question to you. If the merchants supported it, would you be in favor of making Main Street permanently pedestrian through the downtown area?
You know, I've enjoyed the pedestrian downtown area so much. It's finally provided a real central plaza to the city of Ventura that I started talking to some of my friends who are restaurant owners there and merchants. And the ones I've talked to really like it. And I always wondered why, I've been to Europe, why the Europeans all seem to have their restaurants and eat outside, and we Americans want to eat inside. And I think, you know, especially here in Ventura, where if you didn't know, Zillow rated as the best weather in the country. Unfortunately, we're on that radar now, but nonetheless, it's true. It makes a lot of sense to me to make it pedestrian-friendly. And unless I hear a strong swell from those merchants that would be impacted, I'd be all for it. You know, some of the issues would be there's a crown in Main Street, so we'd have to level out Main Street, so that's a cost. You know, how would that be paid? But having a sense of community like this is just a wonderful thing. I think it just makes Ventura a much more attractive city. It makes a city where tourists want to go. You know, I've always liked it, you know, the farmer's market in San Luis Obispo, and thought, why the heck aren't we doing that here, too? So yeah, absolutely, I'm all for it, and you know, the merchants are, then I think it's something we should keep on doing.
Okay, great. Kristi, we'll wrap up with you on this question. What's your view about making the Midtown area permanently pedestrian? I'm sorry, not Midtown, but Main Street area permanently pedestrian through downtown?
Well, we are taking it month by month so far, and I think that's wise. When I helped start the Downtown Ventura Partners, one of our dreams was to make downtown, especially Main Street, more pedestrian-friendly. And this COVID has pushed us into doing it more quickly, I think, than we imagined. And as Doug said, there's a lot of changes that happened because of this pandemic that happened quickly. And some of them are going to be positive. And one of the things that is helping us in the downtown area is the fact that it's open air, it's pedestrian-friendly, it's quiet. You can have outdoor dining in a really quaint historic area, and it's super appealing to people. The Downtown Ventura Partners has done a lot of surveys amongst all their business owners downtown, and the business owners are supportive. So on Tuesday evening of this week, the City Council did vote to support an extension through February. So we're going to keep it closed through February and have monthly check-ins, make sure it's working. It'll be interesting to see in the winter if it still works, because with the wind and the rain and the fog, we're hoping people are still going to want to eat outside if the governor continues to shut the restaurants inside. So yes, I would support it with check-ins to make sure it's working. And the mall, that is where we're going to have to reinvent things, is in our...
Thank you, Kristi. I'm sure that would be a great question, too. But for this next one, we're going to go to Dougie. You're up first, Dougie. And this is, of course, a question on many people's minds, that the Midtown area and other parts of Ventura has seen an upsurge in homelessness and panhandling. So what would be your recommendations, your priorities about how we can get a handle on this issue?
I would say, after ensuring that all our public safety positions are filled, addressing homelessness is my next biggest concern. And it's not just for them and for us, but you know, a lot of the homeless have drug problems and mental health issues. I've looked at Police Chief Sinchler's strategic plan, and he wants to reactivate the gang task force. He wants to be able to devote resources to repeat offenders. He wants to interact with county behavioral health and other agencies in dealing with the homeless. And I support all of those things, and I'm willing to provide the funding to the police department to do that. Because, one, I think it will help the homeless, and there's no reason why we shouldn't. Leaving them to wander as they do doesn't help them. We need to be proactive in doing that. Also, it affects our quality of life. I heard something muted and unmuted, so I hope I didn't lose it on that one. But in any case, I think it'd be nice to be able to assist the homeless to where we don't have... But in any case, I think it'd be nice to be able to assist the homeless to where we don't have these poor souls wandering the streets, if you would. You know, it's a shame what happened in Aloha and nobody in town should feel that they could be threatened because we're allowing our streets to be impacted by the homeless. So I'm all for solving that problem. That's my number two issue.
All right. I apologize for the muting. You and I have the same initials. So it was my mistake. We'll go on to Kristi though. Kristi, can you share with us your views about how to deal with the homelessness and panhandling issues? How would you try and resolve these?
It's, it is an issue that needs about 100 solutions. And it, there's not one solution and I'm really proud of our city for having the wisdom to tackle it from all angles. We do now have a homeless shelter. Thank goodness for that. I'm really proud of that. That, that happened this year. And so we have a place. If somebody is homeless and needs help, we have a place to send them to, which will help them transition to, to permanent housing. We also have a bunch of programs that are super effective. We have our family reconnection program where we find family members of these people that are on the street and we reconnect them so they can get help from their family. We have now with our Ventura Police Department, our commanders are working in districts now. So they're looking at the particular district and helping with that area, which will help that focus as well. The mental health services in our city and county are lacking. And most, from what I've seen in my years dealing with this, most of the people on the street have some sort of mental health issues. And we don't have good services for them. So they stay on the street, even when they go to the shelter. Sometimes, sometimes they come back on the street. So we are working very hard with the county on those mental health services to be able to help people get better and get well. So they don't have to panhandle.
Thank you. And Doug Halter will wrap up with you on this. What are some of your plans to deal with homelessness and panhandling?
Okay, this is an issue that we've been trying to tackle for many, many years. And it's really something that is, I believe everything begins locally, but this is something that has to happen nationally. We need to make sure that national, state and local governments are working in unison to help these people that are either down on their luck or have mental health issues, have substance abuse issues. But the reality is, as you see people along the freeway or in our community or all the RVs are lining up now in Casitas Pass or going down Los Angeles, it's extremely heartbreaking. And I know we're a very compassionate community that has a lot of services. The answer to me, as I sat on this service, social service task force back in the mid 90s, we knew then it's about transitional, transitional shelter, a place where people can come into, you have case management, appropriately assigned case managers and the help that they need to take care of the issue that may have put them on the street and try to get them back on the street. It should be a community-wide issue, effort. I know some of the churches, some of the social service programs, and as Kristi was mentioning, the behavioral health and mental health areas in the county, I'm pretty sure they're overwhelmed with, with not really meeting, being able to meet the needs here in Ventura County. So transitional shelters first, working together as a community. And no one, it's in no one's best interest that anybody lives on the street. It's unhealthy for all of us.
Thank you. Doug, we're going to move on to the next question and we're going to stay with you. So let's hear a little bit about your vision for a particular project, and that's the Ventura Mall. There's been a lot of conversations about the possibilities for the Ventura Mall going forward, perhaps for affordable housing, other things that may happen. And if things come to, into play, what would be the opportunities that you think the city should pursue for development there?
Well, I love these kind of questions. I wish we had more than a minute and a half. But I'll tell you this is, I envision at, at that location, it's the perfect location to do something that is more like an outdoor mall combination with housing. So you could still have shopping on the bottom floor or two, beautiful gardens and fountains. As a landscaper, that's what I do for a profession and I do it as a passion more than anything. But it's been very successful for me. I am very visual and creating more beauty around our community is really important. So creating a beautiful outdoor space, something that may be similar to what the groves are in Los Angeles, but on a smaller basis, that has three and four story housing above, above it. I think this is an opportunity where it can be a win-win to have density. But with density, we have to have mass transit. We have to have effective, usable mass transit that can get us from point A to point B to point C. And that's something that as a native Californian, I feel we've been almost criminally negligent in providing effective mass transit across the state. Here locally in Ventura, we could help impact that and make sure that we have a circular route probably going from the mall location that has the type of amenities I just described to, to the harbor, to the downtown, and then have feeder lines going to the rest of our community off of that. So I think it's a great opportunity. It's hard to believe after 20 years of renovations that we're talking about this, but it's necessary.
Thank you, Doug. Kristi, same question to you. What are some of the visions and opportunities you see for the Ventura Mall?
I hear so many ideas from people and I love it because that is a big piece of property. And retail is changing. Retail is probably not going to go back to what it was before, where everybody goes to stores all the time. With online shopping, people are looking for more experiential entertainment, dining, outdoor, you know, kind of like a downtown. And so I think what we're going to see is malls and especially ours, which is dying, honestly. Went there the other day. It's, it's on its way out. It's owned by Mace Rich, a company that we have no control over, but we do have some control over the zoning. So if we were to zone at mixed use and look into doing outdoor spaces like with, with beautiful places that you'd want to stroll and allow things like offices, professional offices, daycare, it's going to have to expand its uses. It can't just be retail anymore. There's not that much market for retail anymore. But people do want to get out and get amongst other people and have community, eat outside, have outdoor dining, be able to work in an area where you can walk to a store and be able to perhaps put some sort of housing in there as well. We need all of that. It could be a real hub and a community center for this town that's way more than just retail.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up with you, Dougie, on the same question about the Ventura Mall property.
Thank you. You know, I think that it's already actually been highlighted. It's pretty obvious that the mall needs to be repositioned. And I think where we can really help is to interact with the owners or investors that are willing to come in and enter into a public part of private partnership. I think the city has resources that we can use to assist them in the redevelopment of the repositioning of the property. You know, I disagree with the other candidate. I think that we don't want to lose the sales tax revenue. I've been to the collection and it's busy. I think there is demand for sales here. And I think that we want to keep that sales tax revenue, particularly in the next few years, when our revenues are going to be down and we're going to be faced with issues of cutting services and departments. So I think what we need to do is streamline a process. Don't let the owners get caught up in this community development black hole and spend decades trying to redevelop it. Rather, let's proactively enter into public and private partnership to help them reposition the mall, to help them bring in elements that'll make it attractive to everyone, whether that's housing, whether that's a senior center, whether that's opening it up. Let the owners and the investors, there's plenty of repositioning going on in the country and those ideas will work here too. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you, Dougie, for the next question. We haven't talked about the economy. So if you were elected, what are some of your strategies to bring full-time, well-paying jobs to the city of Ventura? And also, how would you retain the good jobs that we already have?
Great. And let me just preface this by saying, I'm absolutely against raising new taxes. That seems to be one of the avenues that governments will turn to in times of, of financial stress. I'm absolutely against it. I think in the long run, it works against all of us. It just raises the cost for consumers. So the obvious answer to that is let's bring in business. Let's bring in good quality companies that want to come here. We've got a beautiful, beautiful environment. We've got the ocean, we've got the hills, we've got the weather. And interestingly, major businesses end up moving to where their CEOs live. And you know, there is a lot of reason why businesses would go here. Unfortunately, they run up against the black hole of the community development park. And I think that needs a major fix. And I'm, I'm, I'm up for that task. I'm willing to do it. I want to streamline it so that these businesses are anxious to come here, to bring their, their high paying jobs, to bring in their workers who are making enough revenue to pay the sales tax when they buy down at the mall or downtown and on our main street. And we've got to do that. And we haven't done that. And you know, voting for more of the same, this is going to mean we're just going to not have it. So it's time to get proactive and start streamlining and to bring these businesses in. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Halter, same question to you. What would be some of your strategies to bring in full-time, well-paying jobs? And how would you retain the good jobs that we already have?
Okay, very good. This is absolutely what we have to do. So it's something I've given a lot of thought to. First and foremost, I would see first where all, all the people are going to in the morning as they're driving north or south to get to their jobs. And we're trying to encourage those businesses to locate in our city closer to their workforce. Because I believe today that over half of our workforce in the city of Ventura commutes outside of Ventura for work, which in turn has made Ventura a veteran community. Along with that, inviting the companies that are, our neighbors are currently working at and inviting those companies to be in our community, encouraging those that are here like Patagonia to continue to expand. That's a major asset to share the benefits of being in Ventura and to have, make sure they're part of the improvements in, in the future of Ventura. That we provide the housing for all economic levels from entry level to the high end. So people can stay and live and work in this community. And to encourage that sort of investment, we have to make sure that our processes are clear and concise. And I've said it many times, certain, we need, people need to understand what it will take to run a business in Ventura. I've run three retail stores. I have a landscape business with about 50 employees. I know all too well where the problems are, what needs to be fixed and why it's very difficult for businesses to want to be located in Ventura. And I could help fix those. And that's why it's time for a change. It's time for me to get on the council and help set that policy.
Thank you. Kristi will wrap up with you. What are your thoughts about how to attract well-paying jobs and retain the ones we have?
We, as a city, according to data that we get every year, Ventura has an extremely healthy jobs, housing balance. We have a wide variety of types of housing and we have a lot of really good jobs. And those jobs are growing and they're being homegrown. Patagonia is expanding. The Trade Desk started here in our incubator and they are now a multi-billion dollar company that is building their world headquarters in our downtown. And the reason they chose our downtown, they just bought the Bank of America building on the corner of Main Street in California. And the reason they want to be in downtown Ventura is because of the quality of life. Their employees want to live here and they want to work here. What the modern employee is looking for is somewhere that's a beautiful city, a walkable city. They want to be able to walk to lunch. They want to be in a historic area where they can see the ocean and where they can enjoy a great quality of life, where they can even walk to work. And we, as a city, are helping Trade Desk. We are helping Patagonia. We are helping, our wellness district is extremely dense with high paying jobs. And we are working to make that wellness district even better so that we will create even more jobs and a better area for people to also have a walkable neighborhood. We have more small businesses in our county.
Thank you, Kristi. And let's, we're getting close to the end, so a couple more questions. But we haven't talked about the environment. And of course, Ventura is a beautiful city on the coast. So I want to make sure we give you time to give us your thoughts on a few things. So what do you, and Kristi, we're going to start with you on this one. Kristi, what do you think is the city's role in combating climate change? Certainly, there's the threat of rising ocean levels, the beaches and maintaining them, dealing with some of the tourism qualities out there and other things in our environment. So just share with us your thoughts about how to preserve the quality and deal with climate change.
Okay. I, I currently sit on the board of Clean Power Alliance. And that is a new community-based power company, which has given our citizens an option for 100% renewable energy. And I'm very proud of the Clean Power Alliance. I'm also the vice chair of an organization called Beacon, which is a multi-county joint powers authority between Santa Barbara County and Ventura County, which works on coastal erosion and coastal resiliency as we adapt to climate change impacts to our coast. Sea level rise and storm surges are battering us, as we have seen at Surfers Point there. And we're in the process of doing a phase two to moving the bike path back out of the way. We're getting grants through Beacon to be able to do that millions of dollars of grants, increase the size of the beach, move the bike path back, because we are going to have to adapt to sea level rise. I also sponsored a Styrofoam ban, which will discontinue the use of Styrofoam in restaurants because it is one of our biggest ocean pollutants. I am a big supporter of the Ventura Land Trust's acquisition of open space for hiking and biking. Cities are going to have to emphasize more open space to be able to combat climate change because we need, we need the urban forest, we need the trees, we need the plants to create that balance that's being ruined in cities by too much asphalt. And that's one of the reasons our environment is so hot and that we're having so many fires. Thank you.
Thank you. Dougie, same question to you as far as your views about what to do to combat global climate change, to deal with rising sea level, maintain the quality of the beaches and other parts of the city of Ventura?
Well, and I think the, all those elements of the environment all come together to provide basically the, the environment that we live in. And I think for me, from my standpoint, one of the reasons I'm running is I've watched as the city council over the years has allowed more and more of our fields to be plowed, asphalted over, more of our orchards to be torn down, to expand the, the limits of the city. I'm absolutely against, against it. I'm a believer in smart growth. I'm a believer in mixed use. You know, unfortunately, we're going to have growth. We don't want to stick our heads in the sand on this issue. We want to deal with it. And my attitude is rather than growing the city out like it has been, I'd rather see it grow up. And I know that there are people out there that are saying, well, I don't want density. It affects my view shed. It hurts, it hurts my environment. The reality is if we don't do it, the state will. And so I'm running because I have the background in dealing with urban planning to address these issues so that we can preserve our environment, so that our streets don't get too crowded, so that we don't plow over more fields. We don't lose our green area and our oxygen providing orchards and crops. So I guess in a nutshell, I think, you know, I want to be clear on that because I think that's a major issue in this campaign. And I, I think, you know, continuing the same course is, is not the right route. So thank you.
You're welcome. And Doug Halter will wrap up this question with you as far as your views about combating global climate change, ocean level, sea level rise, the environment, the beaches, everything that's great about Ventura. How would you address these issues?
Okay, great. First, I'll start by saying that I actually was born and raised up in the Santa Cruz Mountains. That's where I have Italian immigrant family, about 300 or 400 of them, which is one of the reasons why I chose to stay in Ventura 35 years ago after I graduated my chemical engineering degree at Santa Barbara. I, like many of us who are fortunate enough to be born in the state, very much appreciate the absolute outstanding natural beauty that we have from one end to another. The city of Ventura has not only that natural beauty, but the history. And what I would do is one, try to do everything we can to continue transitioning over to clean energy, two, creating jobs and housing net closer to each other so we don't have to use, get in vehicles and create more traffic ingestion and use more, more fuel, more energy. I helped, I was one of the founders for the Botanical Gardens. And one of the things there was all about stormwater runoff and making sure that we showcase exactly how we should do biofilters and filter the water before it hits the ocean. I'm very proud of the land trust. It's something that quite frankly, a lot of us never knew would be possible. And I gotta say, it's, it's an amazing opportunity to have a. to have a backbone of parkland across our 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 community from one end to another. So continue that, but growing the urban forest, keeping our community and our city clean, encouraging people to not pollute, to do the right thing, and be a part of the solution and at the fairgrounds at the beach community and continue management retreat from the beach.
Thank you. Candidates, great job. Unfortunately, we're near the end, so we're going to have to begin closing statements. Before we do, though, just give you a couple ideas of some things that people are also wondering about, issues with traffic in Ventura, your views on dispensaries and cultivation. Also, many questions about housing, which we did address, and just your thoughts about what would be your priorities if you were elected. We are now going to begin with our closing statements. You have a minute and a half, candidates. We're going to go in the reverse order. Dougie Mitchie will be first, and you have one and a half minutes, Dougie.
You know, I've been listening to about how we're going to solve the homeless and how the housing issue is going to be resolved. And I'm thinking, you know, this is the same way we were four years ago, eight years ago. So why would you vote for more of the same? We've got to address these issues. We've got to take care of housing. We've got to take care of homelessness. My number one priority is public safety, so I will make sure that our police and firefighters are fully, positions fully full. I will support Chief Schindler's strategic plan to deal with homelessness so that we can regain our streets and not have to walk down the streets worrying about somebody yelling at us. And help them too with their issues. I think that, you know, it's been very clear here. I am for affordable housing, and the only way that's going to happen is if we make more housing. And I prefer to make it a little more dense. And I love the 1950s Ventura, but I just don't think it's going to hold up this century. Times are changing, and if we don't address it, the state will. So please, let's get somebody on the council that has the background to deal with it. Let's get somebody on the council that has the financial background to deal with the issues that we're going to be confronting. And somebody on the council that really does understand the issues out there and wants to get these things done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kristy Weir.
I was very fortunate to raise my son and daughter here, and I now have six grandkids who live here. And in the next four years, my priorities will be environmental and fiscal sustainability, especially as we recover from COVID. Also, public health and safety and quality of life improvements for all Ventura residents, including children and seniors. As a centuries-old town, we have challenges with aging infrastructure, but also enjoy the unique character of our historic buildings and cultural heritage. Our spectacular geographic location bounded by the ocean, two rivers and hillsides is truly our good fortune to be celebrated and protected. The balance between conservation and growth, between water supply and demand, will be ongoing debates needing steady, responsive leadership. The core services of public safety, street paving, sidewalk maintenance, parks, and urban forestry remain my highest priority, and I will give them my continuing attention and support. In addition, I will focus on enhancements to keep our downtown and midtown thriving, the sustainability of our oceanfront and rivers, ensuring careful, high-quality development, the preservation of open space and hillsides, and creating a more walkable, bike-friendly community for future generations. I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Doug Halter.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, David, for leading this. I got to tell you is, we all have our own journey through life. My own life experiences have shown me how important every single day is. And I know that life is really not about creating an empire, having an ego stroked. It's all about relationships. It's all about making a difference in this world. And I've been unfortunate in having learned that at an early age and very fortunate at learning that at an early age. The things that I've been able to accomplish are things that I never thought I would ever be able to accomplish for this community, including Botanical Gardens and other things that I mentioned earlier. So knowing how to do grassroots organization, how to get things done. I never meant to start my landscape business. That was all by accident. A good friend of mine, Judy Fairchild, I could say no to. And here it is 28 years later, and I have a landscape business where 50 people count on me for their employment. And we have to encourage more people to believe in themselves, to believe in their community and to work together. And I would love to take what I've learned from a private standpoint as a private citizen and bring that level of knowledge, experience, entrepreneurship, and vision to our council. And I will say this, in Ventura, it's two degrees of separation. I don't know, Dougie. I do know Kristy. Kristy, I consider her a friend. I do believe it's time for a change. Kristy has served 17 years, so we do have, when we went to districts, we went to 12-year term limits. I would love the opportunity to be, have her hand over the reins to me and help lead the city for the next 12 years. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our candidates. As I said earlier, it's unfortunate you can't get a nice round of applause from the audience, but I'm sure they're all cheering for all three of you. As a reminder to our audience, this is the Ventura City Council District 2. If you live in that district, you'll be voting for one of these candidates. And this is a unique election in that absentee ballots will be mailed to all voters. You can fill those in, make sure you sign them, and return them either at a ballot drop-off box or mail them. But if you do mail them, make sure you mail them early so they are received in time. If you do wish to vote at a polling place, please be aware that your polling place may actually have changed this year. They're going to larger polling stations, and you should be able to go to any polling station you want, and they'll print off the ballot that fits your district. So with that reminder, though, please sign your mail-in ballots if you go that route. I do want to take a moment to thank Greg Mansfield. He's made this program look so smooth. I mean, he made it look effortless, but believe me, there was a lot of effort that went into this. And also, thank you to Heather LaCalle, who has been shepherding the whole process as well. On behalf of the Midtown Ventura Community Council, I'm David Marin. Thank you for watching. Our next forum begins at 8:00 PM with the candidates for District 3. Thank you and good night.